So Larry, I think we're good to go.
All right. This is a special meeting of the Long Beach Building Commission on December, is it the 3rd? On December 3rd of 2021. We'll call the meeting to order. There are no minutes, there are no agenda. The what prompted the meeting was-
Larry, you probably ought to do attendance first, see who's here.
Oh, all right. Here's what I've got. Bob Lemay, Lou Malin, Joey Schmidt-
Here.
Joe Jagman-
Here.
John Coker-
Here.
And myself, here.
I think we got Pete Byblos out there somewhere, too.
Are you on here, Pete?
He's not on. Maybe not.
You mean that one that says PB or PB phone?
Yeah. Maybe that's-
Well, whoever it is, is muted, so he wouldn't be able to hear.
Pete, can you unmute? Well, okay.
Okay, so the reason the meeting was called was the builder at 2516 in 1900 asked to have a special meeting to consider his drawings and or consider the proposal at 2516. Stop work order was issued because of public safety with the road with the excavation and ramp being so close to the road. I believe Tom Dolph and John Wall went down there, went over it with Steve Wilson, the builder, about what was necessary. Number one, a street cut permit, but number two, the bolstering up of the road edge around it with stone, so we won't have a drainage problem. John, I see you're on here. That was pretty much the crux of what you guys said, right?
Yeah, we just met very briefly with Mr. Wilson and discussed a couple of the issues down there. One was, I think most people are aware, there was a gas main strike the day before that the fire department responded to, and I'm assured NIPSCO did as well. We discussed with Mr. Wilson the fact that he needs to do a locate when he's doing excavation. We also looked a little bit at what was going on with, you know, the ramp work, I'll call it, where they removed some pavement that was existing to use for an access to get to the site and told them that we'd like to be able to protect Lake Shore Drive with some aggregate, which he agreed to do. Tom has, since that time, has already received a street cut permit. I think Tom is going to discuss with Mr. Wilson, potentially making the aggregate area a little deeper into the site. Mr. Wilson showed it at six feet, and we wanted to go a little longer than that, maybe as wide as the pavement that was there. But essentially, those were the two issues. We wanted to talk about, you know, safeing the site out for the holiday weekend. He did agree to put some more, you know, reflective cones down there, which he did do before the holiday weekend. We talked about the street cut permit and mentioned a few things about the site work, whether or not, you know, the permit that he had in place was adequate for that work that was going on. So that was the extent of the conversation, and he did cooperate as far as getting some safety equipment down there. And he, I don't know that he's gotten the stone down there yet, but he did agree to do that.
And was this at 2516 or 1900?
2516.
2516.
Okay.
Thanks, John. The this stop work order, again, I want to make sure everybody understands, was based on the danger of the site and being excavation slash ramp being that close to the road. Lou, unless you have something else, that was the reason, my understanding of the reasoning behind the stop work order.
No, that's what we got. That's the problem.
All right. Steve has since dropped drawings off at the town center about with some height elevations and items that we talked about at the last building commission meeting. Has everybody seen those? Everybody's on mute, so you've either-
Did they get emailed out?
Yeah, no, see it.
Here, I will bring them up here.
And this is at 2516 also?
Yes, it is, Bob.
I got them in an email.
What's the date on that, Joy? I want to rather go through all these things.
Yeah, 11:24.
Is that for the latest one, Lou? I don't think that's the latest one, is it?
That was last Wednesday, before the holiday.
Okay, it seemed like it was so far away. Larry? 11:24.
Larry?
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask, what direction is this meeting and what direction are we going in? Are we, are we here, is this meeting here to review the building permit of 2516? Or is that what we're doing? Or what are we, what are we doing? What is our purpose?
The purpose was to review the new drawings that Steve brought into the office.
Okay, so I thought that possibly, because we were talking about the stop work order, and I think there were two activities that took place. One was the street cut, and the other one was the dig, and the other, and with the dig was the gas leak, and that there was a gas leak in process that was not being, nobody was there to even protect or do anything about that gas leak.
Well, the gas leak, the fire department got there. I don't know how many-
No, I, Larry, I understand that. I do happen, the bad part about it is, I was involved in this, and I did stop on the way home one day on Tuesday, and it was about 2:30, and I just double parked my car just to see what was going on. And I was there, nobody was there at all, and I got out of the car, and I could smell and hear a gas leak, unattended. And then I left, and I went to the town, and I called the fire department, or I talked to the police department, and they handled it, and I think the fire department got out there probably about whatever time it was. And I thought part of this meeting was, and I thought part of stop work order was that there was a gas leak that was left unattended, and I have a concern.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, that's what I'm just saying. I don't know, I don't know what the proper procedure is, but I just think there was obviously some negligence that happened here, number one, which I think you said, that there was not a dig received. I don't think a dig was even put in, which you have to have every time you dig on the property. And I'm just concerned about this. I don't know how everybody, anybody else feels about it.
Joe, this is Chris. I'm uncertain as I listen to you. Are you concerned that unattended, unaddressed? I think, as you know, and if you do not, NIPSCO is very harsh on these. It moves very quickly. And so that part of it will be addressed regardless. So when you say unattended and not doing the things, I don't want to put words in your mouth if you're saying that it's the contractor, Mr. Wilson, whomever, let's make that clear, because I'm unclear of who you're saying was unattended and what the concern is.
Well, I would think, is what you're saying, Chris, that the responsible persons for that property and that project, and I think, you know, you always go to the buck stops here, the general contractor is Mr. Wilson, and whatever, if he had subcontractors, they're also responsible. But I think Mr. Wilson would be responsible for the event that took place.
Well, I can say this, whether Mr. Wilson was or wasn't, whether the homeowners are, whether the subs are, maybe D, the answer is all the above. And I don't want to read between the lines here, and I'm not suggesting or advocating a position. So I'm just not sure what you're asking. If you think that, for instance, any action should be taken against him, that cannot be done today. There is a stop work order, but, you know, there have been actions on licenses and, you know, revocation, suspensions, et cetera. That can't happen today because you notice at the hearing and whoever, you know, let's say the registered, God, I'm not who did, I'm not sure who did the dig, I'm not in the know of that, but let's say they're the responsible party, you know, they're entitled to be represented and have a notice, and that would be a different day than today. Certainly, we could discuss the concerns and the ramifications, but, you know, pulling anybody's livelihood by virtue of the licenses that are granted, that isn't for today. And the stop work order serves the purpose of stopping any further issues, you know, unless and until that's addressed.
But we could schedule a hearing for the next building commission meeting, correct, Chris?
I might be a little concerned with that timing, but we can talk about, I mean, I would suggest any such things that you do in a separate matter. I mean, we, we've been down this road before, right, when, under previous versions, and the town council was involved. The building commission is the proper party to discuss and determine how that's addressed, but I would suggest that it's a completely separate meeting. Your, your building commission meetings already are pretty lengthy and pretty in-depth, and where you are making determinations and having, you know, a quasi court hearing, you know, to where any, you know, let's say the sub is the one who's in the sites, right, of doing, or at least answering to the wrongs and nicking a gas line, I think that's going to be a little more involved than a regular meeting.
So what timeframe would be, what would you suggest for scheduling a hearing?
At least 10 days, and I think that we would give them formal notice, and that would come from my office, and we would send that under the proper ways to make sure that they have proper notice and sufficient time to prepare and come before the town.
How's two weeks from today sound for everybody?
That's fine.
Now, we probably need to vote on whether we have a hearing or not, though, right?
Okay, let me-
Well, I guess what you guys have to determine is, what is the hearing? What are we doing? And if today it's discussing, hey, what went wrong and how do we fix that, that's a discussion you can have today, and you can have that next Friday. The only reason you would have a hearing is if you're moving to try to remove, suspend, et cetera, right, under the, under the town's ordinance. And I want to be clear, I'm not advocating that's what you do. I'm going to get back to how I opened this. I don't want to put words in Joe's mouth. I just want specificity, as we're sitting here, of saying I have concerns or whatever we're doing. What is, what is the nature of those? If there, if there's going to be action down that front, then that's where you, someone would make that motion, and then you size up for that type of hearing. Otherwise, you have that discussion and making sure that, you know, everything is done. And obviously, like I said, NIPSCO is very, very quick to act on these, and, you know, the state code is very clear with regard to penalties and attorney's fees and all of those things that happen with regard to repairs. Is that enough? You know, there's bonds, and anybody who's in danger, you know, there could be a claim on the bond. That's why you have to file them. So whether you need to take more action or not, that's, that's for all of you to determine.
Well, I would suggest that we probably do need to take more action, given that, you know, the danger involved in a gas leak on Lake Shore Drive. I think a contractor who's worked for the length of time Mr. Wilson has in this town knows that a street cut permit is necessary. And we have a history with Mr. Wilson. We had a similar issue before where work was done without a permit, and we, in fact, suspended his license for six months. So I think further action needs to be taken, and I would suggest on those two issues, the gas main and the no street cut permit, that we schedule a hearing for two weeks from today. That would be my motion.
All right, so that would be 1217. So we have a motion to have a meeting to discuss those two items.
But so let me go, just for clarification, as we do that, is that motion, discussion is what we're doing now, discussion is what you can do next Friday? Are you proposing that you're going to suspend and/or have discussions with regard to suspending and/or revoking Mr. Wilson's license, that registration? That, I want to be clear, because those notices need to be clear, and, you know, they want to do what they would like to do, but things, in all fairness to, to Mr. Wilson, he's entitled to know what is going to be considered so that he could duly prepare as well.
Hey, Larry, this is John Coker. Shouldn't we find out first what, what exactly happened by who before we have, you know, drag Mr. Wilson in? Maybe he doesn't have anything to do with this, maybe he does. I don't know, but I don't know why that happened, and shouldn't we find that out first?
Can we, well, can I, can I finish what I started or get into it a little bit? First of all, and I, and I won't answer anybody, but John, there was, there was a gas leak on the property, and I believe things transpired. We're not getting into the details right now, but we can. But the only thing I just want to make clear and see if we all understand that there is a project going on at that property, and Mr. Wilson is the contractor, and there might be other people that are subcontractors. And in my mind, in a hierarchy, I would think if the, now, this is just assumptions, just for clarity, if the, if a subcontractor does damage to a property or whatever, or puts property in danger, I would think he's, he's responsible, but I also think the contractor should also be responsible, because he's, he's the one that's running the project. Is that a reasonable assumption? Not talking about names or anything else, just talking about concepts. Well, here's what happens with 811, which is, I still call it holy moly, because that's what they call it in Chicago. But 811 is a organization that is funded by the utilities, and that is where you call for locates. You're required to, you're required at least two days to report the dig, at least two days before it's to happen. And then they come out and they mark the lines that are there. They tell you specifically which lines they're going to mark, and which lines they're not going to mark that you should contact directly. So that wasn't done in this case.
Can I make a statement about that?
Who is it?
Steve Wilson.
Oh, Steve, yeah, go ahead.
You know, I had put in on the 15th for a request to terminate the gas line at 2516 Lake Shore Drive. When I had that discussion with NIPSCO, and it was brought up about getting Mistig out, they said they handle their own Mistig. They won't use a Mistig ticket from me. They call and they do it themselves. When I was at the site, I saw that the meter was removed, the line was plugged, and I assumed the line was terminated. Well, it wasn't. Since then, the line has been terminated. I have also since then went and had Mistig out there. Now, Mistig, as far as, there was a subcontractor who did the work to hold me accountable for him not getting, you know, Mistig out. I don't quite know how that occurs, but, I mean, this whole thing, NIPSCO, as soon as the gas leak occurred, I called NIPSCO. They came out. They don't want you waiting around the property with the gas leaking. It also doesn't pose any public safety, because the gas is not good if it caught on fire. It's not running up back into the gas main. The gas mains have pressure. Gas will not ignite unless there's oxygen. So the only place it would ever burn is at the end of the pipe where it's cut. Period. It's not going to cause anything else. And that's what I want to be clear about here.
Okay, thanks, Steve. So as I was saying, the normal course of business is you call 811 within two days of your proposed anticipated dig. Normally, they would be out there within the two days. If they're not, it's the contractors, whoever's doing the work, it's their responsibility to call back Mistig and tell them that they have to get the job done. When, when a service from NIPSCO is retired, that does not mean that there's no live gas around the area. NIPSCO doesn't mark their own utilities. I can't think of the, there's a US, or USCI, whatever the hell it is. They're, they're hired by this group that is paid for by the utilities. So whenever something is marked, you have to dig, any time you get closer than two feet to that line, you have to dig by hand. But I want to emphasize again that NIPSCO does not mark their own lines. NIPSCO, if they're going to do any work in the area, call the same number that we call, and the same outfit comes out and marks all the lines. Steve, if somebody gave you bad information, they gave you bad information, but-
No, Larry, all I'm saying is that when I spoke to NIPSCO about terminating the line, they said they would call Mistig themselves, that me calling, they're not going to accept Mistig's findings where I've called it in. They're going to do the same calling for NIPSCO to come back out.
Every, anybody who's working on the job site, and I can defer to my brother John here, because he, they did it all the time. And we had a project in Long Beach, and they, Mistig came out and marked it. And so we started our excavation. We had a gas line 30 feet from where the mark was. So, you know, they came out, and they re-marked it, and you know, were very apologetic. What happens if you don't call Mistig is the cost of redoing that line goes to the contractor who broke it, not to NIPSCO, not to the homeowners, whatever. And it's also, if I'm on a site and I'm digging, and Steve Wilson's on a site, the same site, and he's digging, it doesn't always happen, but you're, you're supposed to each call Mistig. That way you're protected. So if there were no markings and you guys hit the gas line, then that, you know, it doesn't matter to us. NIPSCO is going to come after you for whatever it costs them to do the repair. You know, it's, it's not an abnormal thing to have contractors hit gas lines. I hope it doesn't happen. Landscapers hit gas lines. People installing mailboxes in their own yard hit gas lines. So the thing that concerns me, Steve, is that Joe said he was down there, and you guys had no representation down there. You know, that's a little bit disconcerting, I can tell you, just from the start. And I don't know who called, holy moly, if it was Joe or if it was somebody from your outfit.
I called them. After-
That day.
I had, I had what I believed was a work ticket from NIPSCO saying that the gas line was terminated. It was retired.
Right, retired, maybe I'm not making-
Retired at the make. So what were you digging?
Hold on, either I'm not making sense, or you guys don't understand me. If you're digging on a property and you have not called Mistig, if NIPSCO comes out and retires the line, they retire that line usually within five feet of the right of way. But there's still live gas all the way running under the street. There's still water. There could be electricity. There can be telephone lines. So, you know, it, it was a mistake on you guys' part by not calling.
Can I, can I say something quickly here?
Yeah.
Because Chris, rightly so, Chris asked, when I made my original statement a while ago, and said, you know, what are we going to do? This seems like the discussions we're having now more belong into what we were talking about, where Mr. Wilson could tell us about why he shouldn't have issues and whatever. But, and I think this is what Chris was saying. Chris, am I wrong?
To that end, to that end, there's a motion on the floor by Bob Lemay to set a special meeting to discuss Steve's issues on that job for, on 1217. Is there a second?
And Larry, well, I'll wait till after a second, because I just want to clarify.
Sure. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Chris?
I want to make sure what we're doing here, right? It is not the normal. So that discussion, which again, you could have discussion at the next meeting, or if you're suggesting that you want to have a hearing, a meeting for the purposes of considering revocation, whatever it is, right? Revocation, suspension, or none of those. I'm giving the, again, I'm not advocating that you do any of those. I want to be clear, because it's important, and it's important for correspondence, notices, et cetera. I wanna be clear because it's important and it's important for correspondence, notices, et cetera, publication for that, as well as, uh, for Mr. Wilson's purposes. So, need to be clear in what your intentions are versus just a discussion. If you can continue to discuss that stop work order and the things related to it today, you can discuss those issues and perhaps ask for some submissions prior to the next building commission so that if Mr. Wilson has a position that this will support, what Mr. Coker made mention of, you know, maybe there are some explanations, uh, that, that will, uh, assist. Maybe they will not, I do not know. So, I will, long-winded way of saying, you gotta be clear in whether we're having a discussion or your intention is to have a hearing for those purposes.
And I, and I think what was said is the intention is to have a hearing and a hearing on that situation and how much Mr. Wilson would be culpable. And I would imagine also the subcontractor would also be culpable. And that's where we would find out all of the proper information and if anything should be, uh, should, should be resolved.
And, and to discuss penalties up to and including revocation.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, oh, we can't do all those in favor of Bob Lemay?
Aye.
Joe Jagman?
Aye.
Chad Coker?
Well, I have a problem. I mean, if we're gonna have a discussion and then we're gonna revoke his, his work permit, I mean, his, his ability to work out here at that hearing, is, aren't we getting cart before the horse? Should we know exactly what he did wrong and then let him have a hearing? And have a hearing to specify those things that we think he did wrong and he thinks he did right? I mean, we're gonna have a discussion and then, then hanging before he has a right to? I, I, and I'm a little, I, this makes me...
No, 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 John, aren't we, aren't we talking about at that meeting, we're gonna have a discussion? And we're gonna, and he's gonna get, John. And he's gonna get his side of the coin and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna evaluate and then a decision. There's no decision made right now that, that, that demand for anything. The decision, that we wanna have a meeting so we can evaluate and make a decision at that meeting.
Okay, so John, what do you think?
Well, I, I think we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves, myself. Be something like going to a grand jury and, uh, you know, saying somebody, uh, committed a crime and then, uh, before you go out of the room, convict him.
But, but we're not going, any kind of conviction, uh, at this...
Well, you're taking away, you're taking away his permit, you know, whether that's...
No, 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 we would, if, after we talk at this next meeting and everybody feels that that might be indicated, then we would make that decision at the next meeting to have a hearing. This isn't...
If that's the way we do it, then I'm, I'm, would agree to that.
Joy, this is...
My understanding as well.
That, but those are the reasons I asked those questions and I don't think that's what Joe said. And so, that's why I'm asking for clarification because it was to have a hearing. When I asked for specification of that and what would go out, it was to have a hearing for purposes of that. That's different. Uh, and so, the issue is, do you wanna go through all of this and notice and have a special meeting versus ask Mr. Wilson to submit and you guys could discuss and do some due diligence before next meeting? That's one way and then you could set a hearing if you decide. Versus, do you wanna have an entire? You may, but I don't think that all of you, as communicated, have voiced the same intention for that special meeting.
No, I am not in favor of setting a hearing. No. I, I agree with John then.
Let me get this straight. Setting a hearing doesn't allow any sort of penalty phase, is that correct, Chris? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, if you set the hearing, I'm saying you're doing that for the position, you know what? We're, I have, it's an adversarial event so that you would be. I mean, we've been through this and I don't wanna be smirching, I don't wanna bring up other things, right? But we've, we've had that where we've had a contractor come in represented by counsel and they, they speak their piece, present their side, and representatives of the town have done that and a decision was made. That's the way that I understand what your intention was for this special meeting and that's why I asked the, the, for clarification for Joe.
Yeah, that is my intention with the motion.
Can, can I, oh boy, we're going around. Can I just say something, John? Just, just for, for your sake and, and like I say, I think, and again, I, let me, let me just say it in, in a way that an act, uh, an event took place, okay? That's what, an event took place where there's a gas leak. And that it was an unattended gas leak that I thought was, was dangerous. I ended up calling, uh, going to town, got the police, the fire department came out and there was a broken gas main. So, it's, I believe...
No, it's not a broken gas main.
It, it, what was it, Joe? A ruptured gas main.
Go ahead, Joe.
It wasn't a main.
What? It was the main to the house. It was the main to the house. It was the main to the house.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
It was the main to the house. So, there was a ruptured whatever. And we, we do know, and, and that rupture was at twenty-five sixteen. We do know that Mr. Wilson has, as a contractor, has a permit to do a project there. And we do know that there were equipment out there and I believe, nobody's denying it, that whoever was running that equipment ruptured that, that main and that Mr. Wilson is in charge of that project. Now, let's stop at that, that, those things I think are the given. Am I wrong?
No, keep going, Joe, so we can put this to bed now.
Okay, so, so that's what I'm just saying. So, now, that's the given. So, now, we, we have to evaluate at some point in time what happened and should any consequences be for either or both Mr. Wilson or the person, if it wasn't Mr. Wilson, running the equipment ruptured the gas main and the gas main was left unattended? That's, that's the story, I believe. Done.
Okay, well, so then, then really what we're saying is, is let's have a hearing. Then what you're saying is, basically, we're gonna have a hearing to basically possibly revoke his ability to, to do work out here, right? Is that what we're saying?
That would be... If Mike can answer that, John, for a second? So, yeah, okay, I'll be quiet.
So, so we don't really need to have any, like, discussion. The next step will be having an actual hearing where you'll have an opportunity to have his attorney there. And then we'll have our attorney and then we can present the case and decide whatever needs to be decided.
Correct, yes. John, that's my understanding of Bob's motion and I think that's everybody else's understanding.
Except Joy didn't seem to understand it though.
I get it now.
Okay, so we were down to John Coker.
Okay, I'll say, yeah, aye.
Joy?
Aye.
Okay. We're off to see the wizard. So, on the, that's, that's done now, the whole gas main and, and the meeting, it'll be, uh, you, you wanna keep it at one o'clock on the seventeenth?
I'm good with that and I'll schedule it with Zoom. I'll, I'll take care of the notification if Chris can take care of the, uh, official legal notification to the parties. Is that, that okay, Chris?
He's, he's sleeping.
Yeah, I couldn't try to get myself off mood. I, I'll take care of both the publication that's required as well as the notification.
Okay, I'll just set up the Zoom meeting then.
All right, let me, let me ask, just, just so Chris and I are clear, did, did we satisfy what your questions were originally when I brought the topic up, Chris?
Uh, I, I'm satisfied that we're clear now, yes, of what your intentions are, yes.
Okay, thank you and I appreciate it.
Label this meeting a building commission public hearing, is that correct, Chris?
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so our, the other issue is, was the drawings that Steve presented and I've got...
Larry, I'm sorry, can I, I just interrupted you. Uh, I apologize. Now, I, I think we're talking about, uh, originally, and that's where I'm, I was confused and it's my fault, what this meeting was about and how prepared I am for the meeting. I thought the meeting was primarily for the stop work order because that's what the meeting was, was called and the discussion of the stop work order, should the stop work order continue? And that was about it. I didn't realize that part of the discussion was gonna be about, uh, the height ordinance or anything else. I'm, I, to be honest with you, I'm not really prepared for that. I didn't know that this was the meeting for. The, the question, the question that I have is that he has a permit right now to do work. And, and I could read it to you, I have the permit in front of me, whatever. But the permit that he has in front of us is talking about voids between concrete, concrete slabs and the earth that's in the basement. He's got the voids. He's got voids to be filled with flowable concrete per license, uh, engineer. And, and he's got existing block foundation wall to be straightened and block filled with concrete, uh, bar. Now, that, that's, that's the permit that he has in front of him. And I believe that's what the stop work order is for, that he's gotta stop doing whatever work he's doing. And is it the work to accomplish the end of this? Because what I have noticed is that, that hill, and I understand whatever it takes to get equipment down, but that hill is in, uh, whatever, like you guys saw from the street, et cetera. It's, it's been torn down dramatically. And the one question I have for everybody is there's been work done there, which is whatever. And now, if we don't approve the next permit application that's in place, I would believe the consequence would be that he has to leave the property as it was before. And because of all the work, everything that happened there, I, I, I don't know where everything is. I, I think it's almost impossible to bring back what the property was with the hill and everything else. And if he's fixing the walls, that's fine if it's the existing walls and he's not putting in new foundation walls to support a garage because that hasn't even been approved. Done.
And, you know, I...
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
So, there, there was a, what's called an emergency permit that was submitted at nineteen hundred Lakeshore Drive, which is also Steve's, right, Rick, right?
I would like, I would like to get twenty-five sixteen resolved, the stop work order released so we can finish the work and shore up that property. And that was what I thought the intent of this meeting is, not the witch hunt. I've come to find out it's gonna be. But what I'm asking for now is we satisfied John Wall's requirements. When the stop work order is lifted, I will put the stone in. I was not gonna put in any stone until you asked. And as far as the street cut permit, we weren't doing any work. And I went through the zoning board to get the permits for the foundation repair. And no one ever told me I needed to get a street cut permit. We, I've since gotten that, I've gotten a bond. I, I've, I've contacted Mistig. I've satisfied all of the requests that John had. I would like that stop work order lifted so that I can complete the work and make that foundation safe.
Now, with, with the work that you're talking about, be- because of the second permit, third permit application that you have in front of us, how are you gonna handle the foundation in, on the south side in front of the house where if you're approved, you're gonna need to expand that foundation to carry the garage, et cetera? But you're not approved for that, so how are you gonna handle...
We're not doing, Joe, we're not doing anything there. If you look at the plans, they, it's been engineered, we're doing stress score. They can free span over the area. And we'll have to put a, a footing towards the lakeside, which will also be a retaining wall to support it. So, we will shore up what were the old retaining walls that are crumbling anyways. I mean, it's, it's all on the plan if, if you review it. I had that with Larry and I went through that. That's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking to repair the existing foundation walls, which is what the original permit is for.
And, and, and God, God forbid, Steve, I agree with you and I just wanna make it clear that that's, that's what the project is in front of you, is just to support the existing foundation walls and to do whatever, whatever you have to do in that basement. Because I know you have all, all kind of leakage under there. I call it, you know, where, where by, by the toilets and stuff like that, there, there's a lot of erosion. There's major work inside, uh, with the foundation and, and, and the floor and everything else. I agree, I, I've read the engineer's report that, that you, that he submitted. And if we follow that, I don't have any issues. I'm just saying, I, I just wanna make sure you're not putting in extra foundations or extra anything that's, that's not necessary for the first, for the second permit that we're talking about here.
No, I just wanted to, I wanted to get the existing foundation shored up before I, before I received my main permit. So, I did not have, I didn't want any structural issues with the existing foundation before we start any other work. And then all of a sudden I have a collapse or cave-in. I, I, I'm trying to prevent any sort of catastrophic event. And that's why we did it in, in the way we have thus far. We submitted what we need just to shore up the existing and make sure nothing collapses. And I'm asking to have that stop work order permit.
And that, and, and that work that you're talking about, Steve, that, that is in, in line with that original engineer's report that was given to you a while ago where he talked about...
Yes, yes.
He broke out the different sides, east, west, north, south. And it just seemed to me, and again, I, I, I don't have the expertise, but just reading it and stuff like that, it seemed to me that more, most of the, of, of the work was done from the inside, especially with that floor, that you don't know, you don't know how much has eroded underneath that floor. So, you gotta do a lot of digging to make sure...
No, we don't. The floor was already, A-one came out and, and pumped some sort of so, expandable polyurethane, I don't know what it is, but the, all of the voids underneath the concrete slab have been resolved already. They're all filled in. It's solid, there's support, there are no issues there. The second part of that repair work now is to straighten the existing foundation wall, put dead men in to support it. put dead men in to support it so that we can backfill and be comfortable that their foundation is safe and stable. That's what I thought this meeting was about today.
And then...
And I satisfied all the requirements that John had at first.
I'm...I'm sorry.
Additional permitting, which I did. And I'd like that stop work order released. So I've backfilled the side that's repaired and stabilized it and be able to get at the other side, so I can repair that.
Now, when you say, just...just so I'm clear, you're talking about, when you say the side, you're talking about the south side, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the only side of the foundation we're working at.
Yeah, and I...and I saw that where they said that the...that the foundation wall was leaning. Now, do you have diagrams to show us how far...how far your dead man is and how far your rods are going into...towards the street? Is that...because you're saying...
There's not...there's nothing going into the street, Joe.
Towards...towards the street, toward...I'm sorry.
There's nothing...Joe, the dead men are two foot towards Lake Shore Drive. And they're sitting on the existing foundation footings.
Okay, so that's okay, and it's on the existing? Because that...that the cinder blocks that you put in, that's all on top of the existing? And there was nothing, not a new wall put in with those cinder blocks?
Those are dead men that were installed to support the existing foundation wall and strengthen it, Joe.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna have a meeting on the 17th at 1 o'clock. Uh, everybody bring, you know, make sure you review the stuff that you want to talk about and bring that up at that meeting. The plans for this new project is what I've got on screen here.
Larry? Okay, I think...I think what we have to do for Mr. Wilson, and...and I don't know, like I said, I'm honestly not ready to review those new plans. But I think for Mr. Wilson, I think he brought up a good point, is we do have an existing stop work order. And that stop work order, I...I believe it sounds like what Mr. Wilson is saying, that we're stopping him from uh, finishing the...the...the permit that he has approved. Is there...do we need a discussion there?
Well, I don't know if you need any discussion there, it's either a yea or a nay. So are you ma...is that a motion that you're making?
Well, I guess let me...let me...let me ask the first question to the people on the committee. Does anybody see a reason that the stop work order needs to be in place? Now, I assume that the gas, you know, it sure would be, the gas is turned off and the street people are comfortable with what he's doing? So is there any reason that people, anybody has to keep that stop work order just for the previous permit?
I would make a motion that we lift the stop work order provided that Mr. Wilson uh, completes all the things he discussed with John Wall about the stone and that stuff.
I'd second that, Coker.
Okay, the other discussion?
Yeah, the only other question I have, Steve, which I've been concerned from day one, and I'm still concerned, but we're...I really don't want to get into the new project, but you do have, or you had one before you started everything, you had about a 23 feet drop, a 23 feet long drop between uh, whatever was on the south side of the roadway and the building. So there's about a 23 feet drop. And I'm just saying, if you're talking about backfilling, I don't think the permit would be to backfill any of that 23 feet. It would just be what was existing. And then that 23 feet that I'm talking about, that's a whole issue about the new permit.
All I'm trying to do is restore the property to its existing survey topography study that I have and that everyone there has until I get the next stage of the permit approved.
And...and what you're saying is this...this uh, topout topography shows the previous uh, the existing home prior to any work?
Yes.
Okay, that...that should be clear, yes, yes, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and one more thing, this is Chris, and these projects are getting inspected, right? We know the status of what they were prior. We know what the status they are now, we'll know what the status are after he does the work, correct? So if he overreaches, we'll know that. If he...if he's met all of Mr. Wall's requirements to correct the issues and, you know, that's the contingency, then we are square here. Is that right?
Yeah, Chris, I think that's right. But I'd like to say one more thing about the lifting the stop work order and you know, Steve, as you continue on working. What I want to make sure of is we don't get into a situation like we did down at Stop 18, where work is being done on this...the work that's now under a stop work order. I don't want to find out that you've done work that is part of the new permit or preparatory work for the new permit before you have the permit.
Larry, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Why would I cut my throat? You're already looking to revoke my contractor's license. Why would I even go down that road and give you a reason to revoke my contractor's license? I'm not gonna do that.
I don't know, Steve, but it's happened.
Not with me it hasn't, I mean...
All right.
That permit, I want to fix what it is, Steve.
I got it, I understand, everybody understands. I don't want to go till 5, 6 o'clock tonight, don't know the same thing. So Joy has a motion to release the stop work order as long as Mr. Wilson maintains the proper street runoff, protecting the street from collapse or undermining. That was seconded by John Coker.
Just, Larry, one last comment, and I just want to... Let me just, one last comment. Uh, Steve, the other thing that I meant to bring up that I don't see on your diagrams officially is where the septic is. I hope we get it, we get a copy of that, thank you.
Okay. Joy?
Hi.
John Coker?
Aye.
Bob La May? Bob, were you sleeping?
Aye.
I think you was. Joe?
Aye.
Okay. So the ayes have it. And so Steve, they'll release that stop work order. And you can get rolling on finishing repair of the foundation. But like I said, keep it to that work so we don't have an issue.
Got it.
Okay, good. Thanks, Larry, can I...can I make a motion, or were you gonna say something else, Larry?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, and maybe I'm being selfish, but uh, because I'm not prepared, uh, I make a motion that we would discuss uh, the new part of the project at another, or the second, or the third, I guess it's the third, the third permit that's in front of us for 2516. I make a motion that we discuss that at our next meeting and not this meeting, because I'm not prepared.
I'll second that.
Small for the vote.
Hey, I don't know shorthand, mister.
I thought we had us getting the secretary for you.
I thought it was you.
Not me.
All right.
Righty.
Joe?
Yes. Aye.
Joy?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Bob La May?
Aye.
Okay, that takes it.
Could I...could I do another motion?
You gotta ask John Coker.
Jeez, I don't know, Joe. I'm...I didn't think you were allowed more than two. But go ahead.
Okay. Can I also make a motion that we briefly, and I stress the word briefly, we briefly discuss...discuss the roof on 1900 Lake Shore Drive? So we could possibly get a to fix a damaged roof, so there's not extra damage. We're not, I'm not asking that we redo the whole roof, but at least we get somebody over there, a roofer over there, at least to fix it for the gentleman, so he doesn't have damage.
I'll second that.
Sounds reasonable.
Now, I...I, we're in discussion phase. I have heard, and I apologize, I don't remember where it was, but I've heard that there may be Steve, you or Rogers Roofing was mentioned that maybe they would, they would come out and repair the damage. Is that...is that correct?
Rogers Roofing, the intent is, they were gonna start today, but I didn't have a permit, so I couldn't. They're gonna start Saturday, and they're gonna repair it, it'll take a couple days, they're not working Sunday. But the whole roof, we're just nailing it down to get through the winter because the shingles are literally blowing off the roof. Any winds, it starts to strip the original shingles. We have exposed areas, so we're asking from two days ago for an emergency permit to be issued, so we can complete the work.
And to add into the motion or whatever, the only thing I would like for Rogers Roofing to submit a, just a permit application, just so we have it, but I would think...
I submitted.
There's a new, there's a new application submitted?
Yeah.
No, I did that originally, I submitted for that emergency permit. Came on Wednesday.
But doesn't, I, okay, but my question is, I realize that. My question is, can we make the notation that Rogers Roofing is doing the work, because I don't know, did that, did your permit have Rogers Roofing on there?
We didn't know who was doing it, I didn't know who was available at the time. I knew I first needed the permit, and it can be added to the permit that it's Rogers.
Okay, okay. Mr. Wilson, if you could just send me an email or something, just saying that Mr. Rogers will be doing the work for this emergency permit. Is that okay?
Fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Joe, seconded by Joy. Uh, you know what? I want to add something. Steve, this is just for the roof, it's not for the retaining wall.
Well, that would, that would be the second part, but right now we're talking about the roof, I want to get that. And I...I don't know if we're gonna discuss that retaining wall or not, we haven't done anything, but that's another issue. I mean, that's also an issue. There's a potential for undermining going on.
Right. So I want to make sure you understand that this is just for the roofing portion of the permit.
Yes, right now, that's what we're talking about, just the roof.
All right. Joe?
Aye.
Joy?
Aye.
The hell, I got two Joes here. That's because he talks so much, he talks enough for two people.
I think three, Larry.
Bob La May?
Aye.
And John Coker?
Aye.
Okay. Keep going on your roof, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Can I make another, can I make another motion, Larry?
Hold on, I gotta set my watch. You got three minutes.
All right, can we adjourn?
Oh, Christ.
Can we, can we address the retaining wall since everyone's here?
You know, I think the problem is, Steve, is everybody hasn't had the chance to look at it.
Well, I mean, it's to replace an existing retaining wall, it fell over.
I, the only thing, Steve, I would like to hear from the neighbor, because I think it's for both. It's someplace on the line there. And we'd just like to hear from the neighbor.
Well, we have the survey, and it's not gonna get better, Joe. I mean, erosion, erosion may occur, and then we have a whole new set of issues. And I'm trying to prevent that so that we'll move the new wall, retaining wall we're gonna put in. We're gonna move it in four inches. We have a survey out there. It's already, a line's been strung. We'd like to get that, so that two weeks from now, we're not all embattled in a lawsuit because Mr. Cronin is suing everybody because his patio retaining wall and that collapsed.
And Mr. Wilson, this is Chris Willoughby, let me stop you there. I think, and maybe I'm wrong, Larry, but Mr. Damski is here as well. And so to the extent he needs to chime in, I believe that he's been retained by the homeowner, so...
Yeah, I've represented the LeCues previously on this, this is the 1900 Lake Shore Drive property. Um, obviously, the roof was a primary concern today, the retaining wall is as well. There are conversations with the neighbors. Neighbors have asked them to hold off until they could get a survey. We certainly understand the risk of going forward if that survey were to show a different lot line than what we believe it to be. I understand Steve's got a survey of the property. So again, because of the potential for collapse or the potential for more damage, we would like the board to consider it to the extent that they can. I guess all I can relate to is my clients are concerned about it, they have reached out to the neighbors. The neighbor's position is, well, we want to see a survey first before anything gets done, and recently, they want to make sure something's not being built on their property. My client's position would be, we want to do everything we can, or the LeCues can, to avoid any liability that may come their way from not trying to shore up a problem due to the collapse of that retaining wall. Um, and if that's sufficient, that we've made the request to the board, but the board is telling us that they're not gonna consider that today, we've also put it out to the neighbors that this is what we want to do. I would say they've got some duty to mitigate their potential losses too, but that's a legal argument that the board doesn't need to consider, that's something for the attorneys down the road. Um, we're just trying to make sure we're covering all our bases here for the the protection of the properties.
And Brad, they did, they did finish the Cronin's restake survey, which was the same one we had. So that's out there, we strung lines based on the new pins installed.
Right, I was just going, I was, sorry, I was just going off the last communication from the LeCues, from the Cronins, which was forwarded me earlier this morning, that communication was from, it looks like Monday. So that could be the case, that that...
Yesterday, they did the survey.
Okay.
And this is Chris, for the building commission's benefit, I mean, you obviously can only agree and approve work to be done And this is Chris, for the billing commission's benefit, I mean, you obviously can only agree and, and approve work to be done where they have approval or it's, it's part of the property. So, you know, your determination will be to the extent you feel comfortable or, you know, maybe you put conditions on that of sufficient proof being shown that the work being done is, you know, wholly within, because you obviously can't permit work without agreement on the neighbor's property. So you just need to be satisfied that, you know, where the work is being done is that they actually have the authorization and, and the right to do so.
But can we notify the neighbors that will be meeting in one week? And if they wanna contest the survey that you guys have, that that's the time to do that?
No, they, I'm using their survey.
Alternatively, you, you, you could do both, right? I mean, they have the ability to come to the billing commission, I, I don't know where you are. I'm, I'm just listening in terms of whether there is any dire circumstance that, you know, you can always put a condition on any approval that because you want to allow it to be addressed if it needs to be, if there is an urgent circumstance, but that they need to demonstrate quickly, you know, the Larry satisfaction, for instance, that the survey indicates that it's wholly on, you know, within their property and there are no issues.
Thanks, Chris, thanks, Brad.
Larry, can I just ask the quick question?
Yeah.
What, what caused this issue?
No, the foundation wall fell over.
I, I don't know what caused it, Joe. I've had numerous conversations this week with Mr. Cronin. And I would feel more comfortable in giving Steve the go-ahead on the roof situation to protect their property. But I don't think the wall situation is as cut and dried as what's purported here. And that's from the neighbor, I didn't get, he asked me to get over there yesterday and I did not get there. But sometime over the weekend I will get there.
Okay, so, I, I make a motion that it, that it's reasonable that we wait for Larry to do his review and, and then, and then we can, we can discuss it at that time.
Second motion.
Who said second?
I didn't. Bob Lemay.
Ah, Bob Lemay.
Yes.
Yea or nay?
Oh, yea, I'm sorry. I thought you were just repeating that I seconded.
Uh, Joe.
Yes.
John.
Joe said yes, I said yes.
Better mark that down, go get a lottery ticket. Joy.
Aye.
Okay, we've got that nailed down. I think that's it.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I knew it was gonna be, so I don't have to call you individually.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, thanks, Larry. Bye, I'm sorry.
Bye.